I already got it.
She found out it was for next year. They were asking this year for next year, for this year. No, we're not doing an indication. Well, okay, go do. Call us meeting to order, Councilwoman Step. Would you do the indication?
Sure, I'll be happy to. If you're so inclined, please bow your head and pray with me. Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you today for all the blessings that you've given us. Lord, we thank you for the city and all those who dwell within it and for those who work so hard to make it a place where people can come together and be safe and work and play and live in a sense of community. Lord, we pray that we would continue to work toward these goals of making sure we're providing our citizens with the best services policy possible and that we as citizens will reach out and work with all those in our community and do what we can to make sure all needs are met in every neighborhood and every part of our city. And Lord, as we deal with difficult situations and issues at hand, Lord, we just pray that you will guide us, that you will give us the wisdom and discernment that we need and that we would do everything with from a stance of a pure heart, with pure motives. And Lord, we just pray that you will bless those that are traveling during this weekend and give them safety. Those that may be suffering from illness at this time, that you would give them healing and comfort. And for those that may be suffering in other ways, Lord, we just pray that you would bring comfort to them through others who you would use as your instrument. And we just ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I apologize if I appear to be a little shaky because I am not a very happy citizen right now. I'm not a very happy mayor. We can't take a vote today on what our city staff was directed to do on Monday. Our city manager was informed of the wishes of the council. He decided to go against those. I do not betray confidences and I do not leak information. We had a council person this week leak information and I have been put on notice that it's being spread that this happened on the watch of Mayor Franks. Guess what? We also had another council person talk about leadership. I have been dealing with this issue along with these two ladies right here, Councilwoman Step and Councilwoman Little John, since last Wednesday morning, okay? Some people tried to get me and were thinking of getting me arrested for trespassing, okay? So I'm trying to stay calm, okay? Actions speak louder than words. Now, Councilman Katsupius isn't here and I understand that because this was short notice and he does have a business to run. But I will be calling an emergency meeting every day until I get a quorum, okay? Because what I have witnessed this week has nothing to do with citizens. It all has to do with politics. And Councilwoman Little John and Councilwoman Step are saying, please, they're going under their breaths and say, calm, stay calm, stay calm. I'm going to explain to you. How many people here went to Hunter Huss? Well, not too many of them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
How many people here grew up in South Gastonia, North Carolina? How many people grew up in West Gastonia? In Southwest, any of that? It's bred into us that we fight for what is right and we do what is right. In my life, I've had to make hard decisions and sometimes those decisions have adverse effect on me. But guess what, buttercups? That's what has to be done. That's what leadership is. I am going to share with the news media because I didn't do it, but you want to put our confidential conversations out there. And I told these two that I would not name names, but most people can figure it out, okay? So at the end of the day, and I had a really, really long talk with the man that I respect, admire and look up to, even though he's a little bit younger than I am. And I told him I would be calm and I would be okay. But I will share all of this with the news media and they will see who's right and who's wrong, okay? The last time we had a meeting, we were at the chambers over here and everybody's like, oh, the mayor's crazy, the mayor's crazy. Because I called everybody that sits on the dais out about the budget. Even Councilwoman Step, she wasn't very happy, but we still talk and we're still friends. Other people don't want to talk to me because I called them out. So we voted on a budget and gave money to the continuum of care, which is Health Net Gaston. So two people that work for Health Net Gaston are the ones that were saying, oh, this happened on the mayor's watch. Guess what? That makes it political. I am not a politician because if I was, I wouldn't be up here shaking. I wouldn't have called this meeting. But guess what? You just have to do what's right. And you want to know who stepped up, citizens? Tasha White. You know how much money Tasha made out of this? Zero dollars. Her agency stepped up. Dicky Spargo and City Church. Guess what? They stepped up. St. Mark's stepped up. Pastor John, I do apologize again if you're looking out there that can't remember the name of your church, but it's on Hudson Boulevard over here. They sent people, they sent food. Does Councilwoman Little John and I agree on how we do things? We don't, but we agree to disagree and at the end of the day, we're still friends. So let's back it up to last week. It was pointed out to me that we did not have a cooling shelter. And I'm going to smile when I say that because everything I'm saying, you can go back and look at the tape because there were people sitting on this dais in a January meeting. There was a gentleman named Carson Dean that was standing right here that we were authorizing 1.5 million dollars to his organization. Couldn't answer any question, where'd the money go? But yet he gets paid a whole bunch of money to solve homelessness. We have a council person that sits up here. Her job, you can go back and look at the tape. Oh, when I ran that organization, when I ran that organization, when I ran that organization. Well, if you ran it then and you have anything to do with it now, you're not doing your job. Because the thing about it is, I am a Republican and I'm a proud Republican. But what I am proud the most of is I'm a compassionate conservative because my parents raised me to take care of the least among us. And what I have witnessed in the last seven days is nothing but petty politics, vindictiveness, and I could go on and on and on. So last Friday, I was talking to staff members and I just asked a simple question. Why can't we use the Salvation Army? Well, you can't get in there. It's not safe. So I do what I do. Because see, some people that sit up here, they get upset that I make things happen. Some of them are upset that I mentioned my millionaire friends. Well, if you're going to get it right, folks, it's millionaire and billionaire friends and guess what? They want to bring money to this city because they know what I stand for and they know what I'm capable of. But yet people that sit up here, not these two, they want to play petty politics with people's lives and our citizens. I don't play that, okay? So I'm throwing down the gauntlet today because I'm tired of the games, I'm tired of the backbiting. Because guess what? You want to know who showed up? Tasha White, Dicky Spargo and other churches. So, back to Friday. I called our fire chief. I asked a question. The fire chief answered the question. And I called him back a little bit later and he said, Mayor, I got a feeling you was going to call back, so I got some guys waiting. So the fire marshal, fire inspector came out. We walked the whole building. There were three issues. Two light bulbs for exit signs and a riser that needs to be serviced for the fire suppression system. Well, the part of the building that we're using is segregated from the rest of the building and does not have sprinkler systems. So we were told that we could use the building. So Monday, it didn't happen. So Friday, we had two. City Attorney, can I put you on the spot? Did you or did you not say on Friday afternoon that we would have been better off not doing anything out there because this looked pathetic?
So I haven't answered any questions about law, but the...
That, okay, okay. So several people have said we shouldn't have done anything. I agree with them. It made us as the city of Gastonia, it made this Gaston County, look like we were a bunch of hillbillies. And if that is acceptable to you, I would wish you had moved out of Gastonia. Because that is not acceptable to me. It should not be acceptable to you. Because if you don't take care of people, guess what? Some of these people in the homeless community, they're trying. Some of them we will never reach, but I will tell you this. How many people in here have animals? How many have dogs, cats? Okay? Would you let your dogs out this afternoon for four, five, six, seven hours? Okay. So at the end of the day, people that sit on this dais, some people that are on our staff think it's okay to put people, and I can guarantee you, they wouldn't let their animals out there. So this meeting was called today because of the confusion that has been going on. There is no confusion except that people, and I'll call it out. Our city manager and other people that sit on this dais, they're upset because of myself and Councilwoman Little John. Because we and Councilwoman Step, she's not as vocal as I am, but we talk probably tend, we talk to each other more than we talk to our spouses. And, but we are always going to do what's right for the people. I don't play politics at all. So this meeting was supposed to be about what, I had a consensus on Monday. And the consensus was, we were going to go into the building, which we did on Tuesday. And then, lo and behold, some people were going to try to get me in trouble. Guess what? Lock me up. Because I'll get locked up every day to do what's right for the people. That didn't happen, so thank you, Lord Jesus, for me not getting locked up. But guess what? I did what was right. And the community, the community, there were whites, there were blacks, there were Asians, there were Hispanics. That all came together. Some other people that sit up here like to play identity politics. I meet you where you're at. That should be enough said. Because when I meet you where you're at, I don't look at color, I don't look at socioeconomic background. I look at you as a person. And what some people have forgot is that we are elected to serve the people. We are elected to make hard decisions. We are the ones that run this city. And there's some people up here who have forgotten that. And some people make excuses for not being here. I'm okay with that because actions speak louder than words. So Tuesday, when I left, I was the last person to leave. I didn't lock the doors, the net die did that, but I was the last person to leave and lock the gates. I went home for the first time in nineteen months since I've sat in this chair and said, I finally got something done. I finally accomplished something. So I get up in the morning. There's a text message that's sent out by somebody from the continuum of care telling volunteers not to show up. First of all, that was not her call. We had food. Now, we did, we did do something we weren't really supposed to do. We served homemade food, which we're not allowed. So we weren't going to serve any more homemade food because that's not the reason we could occupy that building. It goes against the occupancy of the building. So we had volunteers lined up all the way through Monday. So we have a person that sent out and an agency that sent out a message to all the volunteers. It's closed. Who gave her, and I'm not going to ask it now, I'm going to wait till everybody else is up here. Because I have been attacked and attacked and attacked and I've sat up here and smiled. I don't care. Because I know my heart is pure and what I'm doing is about, for everybody that sits in this room, if you live in the city of Gastonia and even if you don't, that's why I live my life. The good Lord has blessed me, so I decided to give back. And like I said, when I went to bed Tuesday night, I was happy. I got something accomplished. Because on Monday, we gave the city manager and the assistant city manager direction. And then it got into a back and forth, back and forth. Got ready to say a bad word. I stopped. In a power play. Guess what? You don't pay, play power plays with people's lives, okay? And there's some reporters that are in here. I gave them some tidbits and said, oh, why don't you wait until the rest of the story comes out? They didn't do any investigative reporting because it doesn't fit their agenda. And they're buddies with some people that sit up here on the dais, okay? So I will be having a press conference next week where I might just wait until the next city council meeting. But I did promise a man that I respect to that at that meeting I would be very calm. Because you guys have no clue and I'm at fault for this. Because there's a lot of stuff that I have compartmentalized and said, okay, I don't want to do this because I don't want the city to get any more black eyes than we're getting. Well, guess what? I inc cause these black eyes because all I've done is stand up for the people and the taxpayers. That's it, end of story. You might not like me, you might not care for me, that's okay. Because I know that the good Lord is behind me because I prayed and prayed and prayed to run away from this seat. And it always pulled me back. My wife is not a very religious person. And she told me, you're the right person at the right time in the right place. And see, that's why a lot of stuff has happened the last six or eight months. Cheryl's telling me to shut up over here. I'm usually telling her to be quiet. So I ran. I won. Some people don't like that because they know I'm here to do the people's business. So like I said, I'll get with our city attorney and I'm going to call an emergency meeting every day because it's so funny when I release these text messages. The back and forth that's been going on today has made people squirm. They're scared that the truth is going to come out. So guess what happened this afternoon, folks? We have people over there today because pressure to do the right thing is always going to prevail over people's ideologies, people's vindictiveness, people's pettiness. And I'm not a preacher, but I'm going to tell you, it's brought a lot of stuff out sitting in this seat for the last nineteen months. And I was prepared to answer or ask our staff some serious questions. But I'm going to wait until the people who are responsible and gave them marching orders. And one of them in particular, I asked, do you really want to go down with that ship? And they said yes. So I'm going to oblige that. Because this meeting was to put all this to rest on the cooling station. And I'll be honest. They both know this. I didn't want to use the Salvation Army because we have other purposes for that building. We are going to use that building. But guess what? Sometimes you just got to do what's right. And I'll shut up until they talk and then I'll talk some more. But thank you for your time and thank you all for being here. And I see numerous volunteers here that actually helped, you know? And when you have to force somebody to do their job, because in our budget, we have a council person that approved money for the agency that they work for. That person should have recused themselves from talking about the budget or even voting on the budget. Because that's a conflict of interest and I'll be quiet for a few minutes. Councilwoman Little John?
Thank you. I'm not, let me say this. Mine is going to be short and brief. Last week, I posted on my Facebook page, on my own personal social media regarding the cooling station. And I'm going to say this, this is how we got here today. And I said to everybody on this council that we have a building that we spent hard-earned taxpayers' money for. Two million dollars.
Two point four.
And they said, well, the planning was in place. Now, when all of these people showed up and I said to every last one of them, if six months of planning went in to those two fans and a cooler, the planners need to be fired. And I mean what I said and I said what I meant. Now, now I'm going to say this, this meeting right here, yes, he wanted to call it, other people had other obligations. And I'm going to say this, yes, a lot of texts have been going on. And I specifically went to two people today and I have the fire. Thank you for showing up, for the citizens. See, the only person that can shut down a building that's not up to code is the fire department. So do I trust the text is saying that a building is not safe? Not at all.
So why are they tearing down?
Excuse me. So I said this, I showed up at Chief Welch's office this morning. I have the fire inspection report that they sent to the city of Gastonia last week. And they cleared that building last Friday. There, now, an email went out from COC. I don't know who the lady is or whatever, but let me tell you this.
Marvy.
Chief Stowe is the fire marshal. Fire Chief Welch I met with because that's in their purview. They are the only people that can shut down the building and tell us that it's not safe. And that's not what they did. I got the report. The building is safe. We own it. All of the back and forth is unnecessary. We have five days that we, and I'm going to say this. You have people that spent money. I just left the Salvation Army building. And we had Help Carolina with a van packing up all of their stuff that they donated. Because of what? This is nothing but pride. It is back and forth between, guess what, our city manager and I just, listen. I just told every last one of them and the city attorney, I only asked the attorney anything that has to do with statutes. So I've been pretty versed right now in law, one-on-one, and I thank Eric for doing that. But it is appalling that, and I'm going to say it, that we have a city manager that go on vacation, did not file a letter with the city clerk. So what happens when he doesn't file the letter? He's still in charge. Don't mind it. But at least some assistant city managers stepped up. Now, during this whole period, Councilwoman Little John was out of town on business. But they met, they opened, and I thanked Quentin McFider for stepping up and doing what was right by citizens, by the least of these. That's all we talking about? So all the pettiness, yes, it has been petty. And I'm going to tell you this, and I thought my sister was going to be here, but she told me, she said, Cheryl, stop trying to make people care. Now, I'm telling you, that's what this is all about. Is people don't care. And I got a sister that tells me, stop trying to make them care. They do not care. They do not care. And I'm begging people. This ain't grandstanding. What I'm doing is this, I'm holding people accountable. And I'm going through Ward Four, and I'm saying, this is what has not been done. But we are here to talk about nobody else, and I'm gonna say this, but that shelter and that cooling station. We gonna make the main thing the main thing. And the main thing right now is that after talking to the chief of gyms, because in the text, the city manager said it wasn't, it was gyms call. And I'm telling you, when somebody try to throw somebody under the bus, guess what? I'm chasing it down. And I went straight over to gyms, and I sat down with the chief. And he told me, he said, Councilwoman Little John, I don't have anything to do with the inside of that building. I give the orders on the outside. And the outside is what I'm responsible for. In a meeting, he said, I made the call. During an entire day, they look at a weather forecast. He said, anytime during a day, if it says it's ninety degrees, we gonna open up the cooling station. At ten o'clock, all the way to six. But no, this morning, we going back and forth with council people. You micromanaging them. No, I'm not. Let me tell you what I'm doing, I'm holding people accountable. So a gyms person that was in a meeting with continuum of care, and he told me, out of his mouth, Chief Lampier, he said, Councilwoman Little John, we said in meetings, if the temperature during the day, if it says the forecast is ninety degree temperature, is at two o'clock, three o'clock, one o'clock, we gonna open up that facility at ten, and we will stay open to six. But today, we going back and forth. We being petty. Well, it says Gastonia's gonna be ninety at three o'clock. Come on, y'all. Now that's what we going. Jennifer, you there? That's it. That's what, come on. We, and I say this, we can do better. But get mad at me for speaking up, for the unhoused, and let me say to everybody in here, we have all fallen some hard times. But let me tell you what I'm not gonna do. I will not allow people to be comfortable in wrongdoing. And be comfortable, because we wanna say unhoused. These are homeless individuals. And all they need, and all that, and I'm gonna give credit where credit is due. Tasha White rallied the churches. She rallied volunteers all over this city to guess what? To care. To care. To do something that my sister said that they didn't, and she was talking about the city of Gastonia. So guess what? People showed up. People showed up on Tuesday. I make a call. And the call was, we ready to go? Mayor Franks said, Cheryl, no, they closed. I said, what are you talking about? This report says we can open, from the fire department. Now, I'm gonna tell you, every last one of y'all. The fire department, they said we were good on Friday. How many days did we allow people to suffer? How many days did we allow people to be in harms way? Because of politics. It is unnecessary, it's ugly, it's mean, and I said on a text, it's pathetic that we are going to go back and forth over people's lives. And I'm gonna say this. And everybody said, well Cheryl, you making the council look bad. No, we making ourselves look bad. I'm a part of some mess now, that we need to clean up. And what I'm not gonna do is allow anyone to threaten, bully, try to intimidate. Oh, they bringing the fire, and I told Chief Welch, I think so today, I said, being facetious, I said, they don't understand. I got flame retardant all over me. Bring the fire. We talking about lives. We talking about people right now. At three thirty-seven, we were supposed to be open this morning at ten o'clock. But we got volunteers going to get their stuff out of a building. Now, I asked every last one of you all. You'll never know if you, or your seed gonna need some help one day. I'm telling you. And we got people that is intimidated, because they report to somebody, and I'm telling you, I called on the person. And they said, well, you know, Councilwoman Little, I just feel like I'm in, I'm in between. That's what's happening here. We got a culture of intimidation. We got a culture that is bad. And, oh, micromanaging, no. I'm making people step up and do, excuse me, I was gonna say it, their job. That's it. And I spoke, and I hope at this meeting that we can ask questions, because the continuum of care is here, correct? I was with you on Sunday. Saturday, correct? Now let me say this, on Saturday, I was told that they got a call at the last minute. Now, yep, yep, y'all get quiet. And see, people running, yep, nobody should fear for their jobs, because they wanna tell the truth. But that's what's happening now. And I made a call. I said to somebody, are they pressuring you? Well, Councilwoman Little John, I just want, well, people's funding is in jeopardy, because they, they wanna tell the truth. People's jobs on the line. Because they wanna do what's right. Now I'm gonna say this, it's not right. There's nothing that has happened in the last week and a half, has been right by the unhoused. And I, cause what I was told was, we need to get to the table. Let me tell you this, I don't know how many tables that we didn't been at. But in January, it was cold. They knew that this hot weather was coming. And let me say this, whoever the lead agency was, it should not be us. If somebody else is the lead agency, and if that is what came out of some planning, it was poor planning. It was poor preparation, and it was disgusting. And the area that they put the cooler, grass is about three feet high. Now, if that area is owned by the city, shame on the city that they didn't go in there and cut it to make it acceptable to the unhoused. But we cleaned up the area where the building was. But all of those volunteers that came yesterday, and it was locked, but they set up their tent outside. Now I want y'all to hear me. The only reason that they moved, because they were told that they were trespassing. We own the property. So we gonna trespass some volunteers that's outside with water. It makes no sense. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Jennifer. But let me say this, this is true. My grandmother used to say, common sense is not common. And I know Mayor Franks had told me, he said, well Cheryl, you know, people say that you know you up here. And I think we need to take it down. Well, I'm here to inform everybody in this room. This ain't the time to take it down. This ain't time to take it down. You know why? I didn't try that, and I didn't get no results. So I'm gonna keep speaking loud and proud. For the unhoused, homeless, the least of these, Ward Four, until we do right. But we gonna hold some people accountable for what they did, because today we supposed to be open. This ain't gyms, and I ain't gonna let nobody, I'm telling you, just try to throw the chief and gyms in the county under the bus. Not at all. I've already went to the fire department, and I went to gyms. They have done what's right. It's us. That's where the problem is.
Councilwoman Stepp?
I have a little different personality than my colleagues up here, so...
And we've all known each other over forty years.
We're all Hus graduate, and we all went to school together, but I I tend to come at things in a different, from a different approach. So I'm not gonna get fired up. That doesn't mean I don't care. That doesn't mean that I am not working on a plan to find solutions. But I do wanna, I always come at things from, I wanna, I wanna, it's a little different perspective. And maybe it's just from being here longer than these two. I've worked with these other council people. They care. To say they don't care is unfair. Some of them are out of time with their family. Some of them had job obligations, so it's not that they don't care. I don't, I don't want to portray these people as that they don't care about the city. They wouldn't devote the time that they do if they didn't care. So I, I wanna be fair. I wanna be fair about that. And then, I also wanna just talk about how things have been done in the past. I don't think any of this was intentional. I felt like this sort of fell in the city's lap. In the past, the county has handled the cooling station. They do have the Department of Health and Human Services. We, and the Continuum of Care, and Gyms, which is a county organization, have partnered with them. And this year, I did ask the question, was there a plan in place? I was told yes, from someone in the county. And then when it got hot, evidently there was no plan in place. I'm not sure why there wasn't a plan in place. So then it fell, fell to us to try to get something together quickly. What was put together quickly was not acceptable, it was not adequate. We didn't have tents. In the past, we've had tents with misters. Evidently, those have been worn out or broken. I wish we had known sooner, maybe we could have, have worked to purchase some. So then we had to, we had to try to pivot. And figure out a new solution. So that is when we tried to find a way to temporarily use that facility in order to get some people some relief. And the safety issue was not just about the fire inspection. We had no procedures in place because things happened so quickly. We had no training. True training, because people, things happen so quickly. The first day, we had no law enforcement up there, because things happened so quickly. And we did, we went, we got through that day. We pulled together, we had staff up there, we had many wonderful volunteers up there, we had council people up there, and we got through that day. But it's also our responsibility, as we try to help these people, to make sure we're doing things by law, by procedure, and in a safe way. And that doesn't just mean light bulbs and sprinkler systems. That means to make sure everyone that might come into that building, whether they are a volunteer, a homeless person, or a staff member, is safe. So when we say, and when someone maybe said this building was not safe, I didn't say that, but wherever that came from, I'm assuming they meant because we were still working to get all those things in place, because things happened so quickly. It wasn't from a lack of care, it was from, from a heart, I think, of trying to make sure it was done right. And we will continue to work on these things. So my, what I'm saying to you is, obviously, I care. I've worked tirelessly for this community for almost eight years, well, before that in other ways, but as a council member. And I have done, you know, I've worked, when the Peacock was open, I've done point and time councils, I've done things through my church, who tried to start a ministry with other churches. So it's not like I don't care. And I do think we need to find a solution, and I'm ready to work to find that solution. But I wanna be fair about it, and, and I wanna make sure everyone is safe. Communication broke down somewhere along this way. And we need to come to the table together, and we need to partner with one another. Tasha says it all the time, when spiders, revs, right? So, you know, we all have to work together. So when I come about it, from a, a point of view of, let's stop, let's stop all of this as causing some division, so that we can come together, so people feel like they can come together and work together to find common sense, real solutions. There's always gonna be people who think, oh, you didn't do the right thing, or you did do the right thing, you could have done better, you did right. But in the end, the goal is to help the people that need to be helped. Let's come together, let's work together, and let's get a solution that works for everybody. It's gonna take us all guys. It's, it's not gonna just take the city council, it's not gonna just take help, anchor. It's not, it's not just gonna take the county, it's not just gonna take continuum of care, it's gonna take everybody. I'm willing to step up and do what I can, in my position as both a citizen, a church member at First ARP, and as a city council member. But let's stop blaming, put the past behind us, and look forward and find solutions. Thank you.
See, that's where, like I said, Councilwoman Stepp and I've been friends for forty-three years? Something like that. Long time. We're old, so. And we always agree, I mean, we, you would've thought we were gonna shoot each other. Yesterday, we went at it so hard. And I, I agree with everything that she just said. We have different approaches. But I keep saying the videotape. Go back to our January meeting that was held in these exact chambers. Everybody was saying, Mayor Franks, you don't care about people, it's cold outside. Guess what? They came in here and blamed the dude Carson Dean for the continuum of care. A council person defended it. They said, oh, well you didn't tell us, when you get paid to do a job. And some people said, oh, well the mayor just doesn't understand healthcare net, Gastonia Healthcare Net, or whatever it's called. Well, health net Gaston. Okay? So, do your job, okay? And the thing is, is, I told them, go back and look at the tape. If this happens again, it is unacceptable. End of story. Guess what? We had a council person defend them. Yeah, you're defending who writes your checks. So, no, this is not for the public to speak. Because you were the one that said, it happens on Mayor Franks's watch. Guess what? Leadership is leadership. And when people aren't doing their jobs, they get paid out of our budget to be the lead agency. They have failed the citizens of Gastonia. I'm not speaking to the rest of the people. And we've got people trying to defend failure. I do not defend failure. And just like Councilwoman Stepp and I, we go back and forth. But at the end of the day, we want the same thing. But I look at it from a proactive point. When I see a problem, I make it happen, I get it done. And guess what? That's what the three of us, and Councilman Kasupis, we did. But at the end of the day, go back and look at the tape. I said, if this happens again, it is unacceptable. And I kept waiting, and I kept waiting. The temperatures kept getting higher and higher. And I was waiting for people to call me out. Guess what? That's what happened. But then when you call out their inadequacies, their incompetence, everybody wants to defend them. And some people that sit on this council don't like it when I say, you cannot defend the indefensible. And Councilwoman Little John keeps poking me, so I'll shut up. I'll pass the mic back to one of them.
Cause we gotta keep the main thing the main thing. The main thing is this. And I hear, we all, we can agree to disagree. But let me tell you this, when people get paid to do a job, and I made it real simple. It is this. In the wintertime, we were talking about the same thing. And we want to accept and say, you know, people make mistakes. No, but no, let me tell you, everybody got a job to do. And if people don't want, and it's not micromanaging. It is called, I'm making sure that you doing what you supposed to do. And when you not, guess what? And it's, this is it. It's failure, but it's, it's a different kind of failure. All I ask for is- All I ask for is...
Accountability.
Accountability. That's it. But I, I'm telling you, if somebody choking me with, this is not your job to do, Councilwoman Littlejohn, we have been planning. Okay, that's the plan that came out. And I said to all of y'all, Ray Charles can see that that plan was not correct. Now, I'm just asking. Councilwoman Stepp, she got a different approach. Let me tell you what my approach is. When people get paid to do a job, and when they don't do the job, guess what? All of us gotta be held accountable, that's all I want. And all I'm saying is this, all of this intimidation tactics is not gonna work. That's all it is. People don't want to tell the truth. And the truth is, is this, whoever the lead agency is, and I'm not gonna say the name because I don't want to get incorrect. But I... Thank you, I appreciate that, Health Net Gaston. Y'all were out there, and we stayed out there for thirty minutes on Saturday. And I said that y'all's body language told the story.
And yours did too.
Exactly, and mine still does. See, I'm gonna stand on mine. And mine is this. There you go, I am. And I'm gonna stand on this. And I asked both of you all. I said, all three of us are smart women, y'all executives. And I said, and I know I'm a boss, and I'm a city council person. I said, look at that. Forget about the titles, is that acceptable? And you still didn't want to say.
That's not true. What I said to you on Saturday was that if anybody had any common sense, knows that the building would obviously be the better choice.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
But in order, and what Crystal said...
Go ahead.
Is the director of Health Net Gaston...
Yes.
Stated that the option that we were given, that was acceptable. Because that was the option that was given.
Right.
We had no idea that the building was an option.
Okay, and what did I tell you? I appreciate y'all's honesty. Because y'all pointed out the lack that we have. And I told you, I said, thank you so much for clearing it up. But she also said that she got a call at the last minute.
And that's exactly right. She got a call thirty minutes prior to the meeting, and she attended the meeting.
Okay, so let me ask, no, let me ask these. You heard what she said. She got a call at the last minute. Now I'm gonna say to this, that's unacceptable. And nobody up here is, and I told you, I appreciate it, y'all's honesty. Y'all had no idea that I was gonna drive up. But thank God, you know, he told me to go that way.
And certainly, he told me to go that way too.
And I appreciate it. But y'all cleared up the lack of planning, preparation, and you all said the same thing that everybody, that's why we in the outcry, that that was unacceptable. And so I appreciate you saying it. Because that's exactly what I'm standing on. You had no idea that the building was available.
That is correct.
And guess what? On Saturday, at that meeting, an assistant city manager that's sitting right here met with Mayor Franks. And he wanted to step up so we can ask him some questions too.
No, we just need to...
Is this. The building on Friday was given a clearance. Now I'm gonna say this, during planning, as my colleague right here wants to allude to, if proper planning was in place, all of the things that she just said would have already been written down and already have been thought out since January. So what basically she's saying is that we failed again in planning. We didn't have it in place. There was no security, okay? That's fine. I appreciate everybody's honesty, but it points out that it was poor planning. And so now, we ain't gotta beat a dead horse. The bottom line is, is that I'm not gonna let nobody throw the fire department or gyms under the bus. I'm not talking to you. I'm talking directly to the city manager. So I'm making myself crystal. All of this, the buck stopped with him. He runs this city. But we hire him. And we hire this man right here. So that's who needs to be here answering to the citizens of Gastonia. This is an emergency meeting that was called by the mayor. I'm not talking about nobody else. But we have an assistant city manager present. We got other city people that's present. Is Michael Peoples here today?
No, he is on vacation. That was planned for many, for a long time. He is far away, but he has been available by the phone.
Okay. Who's in charge? Who's in charge still running the city on vacation? Uh-uh, they want to know? So go ahead and ask the question. Y'all want to know? Attorney.
I want to know how long the vacation is, because I've been calling him since like last...
Can you please stand up and...
I was just wondering how long the vacation was, because I had been trying to reach Michael Peoples last Thursday, and they've been saying that he was on vacation. So today is, whatever the day is, Thursday, maybe he's off for a while.
Well, I am the mayor of this fine city. But I've ran numerous businesses in my life. Thousand people that worked for me. And if you worked for me, I'm only one vote on this council. What I have seen this week, you would have been given your pink slip and asked to go on your way. Because I don't make excuses for people who have agendas and all these other things we've talked about today. Because what it comes down to, and I'm not gonna go off on a tangent again, but like Councilwoman Littlejohn said, and what Councilwoman Stepp said. I sat right here in January, and we're gonna end on this. Because we're gonna keep revisiting this until it's made right. But I sat right here, told that person, and another person sitting on this council, and everybody up here. If it happens again, it's unacceptable. Because when you are given money to be the lead agency on homelessness, and you want to come and talk to me and blame it all on me, guess what? And you say, oh, why didn't you call us? It's not my job to call y'all. It's the lead agencies. Because I will be saying to the city council, we need to change lead agency. And we'll see where people's allegiance lie. If it lies with the people or the people who sign their paychecks, okay? So at the end of the day, I sat right here, and I said, if it happens again, it's unacceptable. And guess what happened? They played right into it. They didn't do what they were supposed to do. And everybody wants to make excuses. I'm done making excuses for people. Because at the end of the day, it was hot as, I got recently another bad word. It was very, very hot. And it's very, very hot today. Okay?
And it's closed.
And it's closed. So we put it all together ourselves. And some people say that I overstepped my bounds. I'll do it again. I'll do it every day, all day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Because I, like I always say, I'm just a poor old boy from South Gastonia, but my mama raised me right. Some people say I'm not a Christian because I'm Catholic, but that's another thing. But anyway, like I said, at the end of the day, we are gonna make what's right. I shouldn't have to, the three of us shouldn't have to fight this hard to make what's right. And I'll say this, looking at every one of these cameras. Anybody who has made excuses, anybody who has not stepped up, anybody who continues to cover for people, guess what? People are afraid of the light. And an old saying, a kicked dog barks. So for y'all that aren't country, that means people who are guilty of doing things, or they were doing something bad, when they get kicked, they holler, they start talking, they start making excuses. I don't make excuses. Because if you work for me, you come to me with solutions. Because all I've heard this week is excuse after excuse after excuse. You know what that means? You are the problem. Because come to me with solutions. And when people aren't allowed to do their jobs, and there's another incident that will come out shortly. So I'm gonna end this meeting today.
I got one question.
You got one question?
I think that everybody here should hear, number one is, we got an assistant city manager here. And let me tell you this, I ain't gonna hide. Quentin McFatter. I think the people need to hear from you. Mike on vacation. You and I had a conversation.
But you were also given direction as the, what the will of the council was on Monday, and then after that, all I got was flack.
No, we just need to hear from Mr. McFatter. Because he's an assistant city manager. And it would be irresponsible of us to sit here, and we know that our city manager is on vacation. So you next in command, but we know that he did not file that with the clerk. I just got one question. When you met with the mayor, what was the decision about the Salvation Army building?
I think those questions are probably be answered at a later date. And by the way, I'm not second in command, just as a fact, the city manager is still in charge.
The city manager is still in charge, but you met with the mayor?
Yes, to talk about some of the challenges with the building, yes.
Was it to open?
We talked about what that would look like if we were to, did we also talk about the...
No, sir. No, sir. No, sir. I had a consensus. That consensus was relayed to you. And the consensus was relayed to the city manager. He wanted to, at the last minute, change what we had said. And I told him, no. I talked to the mayor pro tem. The mayor pro tem says, you are correct, mayor. We had a consensus, this is what we wanted done. He tried to change it. Mayor pro tem said, mayor, whatever you decide to do, I got your back. And I said, I'm going with our original plan. And all we have gotten since I, on behalf of a majority of the council, didn't vote on it, because we're not allowed to vote on it because it's not a meeting, but it was a consensus. And we've done that plenty of times over the history of Gastonia. That consensus was not followed. It was not implemented. And all I've heard is excuses. So at the end of the day, we, as a body, have to make a decision about one of our employees. And guess what? Quentin McFatter, did I not ask you, who made that decision that the building could not be used? You were honest with me. You said it was yourself and Michael. But guess what? I don't take excuses. I look for solutions. So what did I do? Made a few calls, called the fire chief, showed up, and said, the building is okay to be used. Should have been the end of story, but it's not. So guess what? It's gonna get rocky, and some people don't like it. They want everything to be kumbaya up here. They want everything to be nice and calm. I'm gonna explain to you. It is hot outside. I was hired for all, or elected for all eighty-seven thousand people that live in this city. We are having ward voting now, so they have their wards. But the only person that sits on this dais that's responsible for all eighty-seven thousand people is myself. If you want to throw me under the bus, and try to throw me under the bus, and people up there say it happened on my watch, guess what? It is my watch, and I'm here to tell you, some people up here want to question leadership. We'll see what leadership is going forward. Because people were given direction. The direction was not followed. All I heard was excuse after excuse. If you want to stand on that, you can stand on it. But you were given clear instructions as to what needed to be done, but you want to buck and show who is boss. Guess what? At the end of the day, I'm just one vote. And I'll put everybody on this council on notice. Because the one thing is, everybody that sits on this dais was elected by the citizens of Gastonia. And we will not fail them again. Because I will say this, I let this play out. Because I knew what was gonna happen. And my peers wanted to defend the indefensible. So all their little things, people are afraid of the light. So at the end of the day, I'll look in this camera right here, we are gonna do what's best for every citizen. And some of my compadres on the right side of the aisle are gonna get mad because a little bit of money has to be spent. That's okay. Because you gotta do what's right. And we are, as a body, gonna do what's right. Thank y'all for being here today. And if anybody wants to discuss anything with us after this, we'll all be available. Thank you.